Members of public, press, anyone watching on YouTube to this, the July 18th meeting of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor McDonald, that the meeting of the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry be hereby called to order.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Counselor Warden sends along his regrets as long as well as, it's easy for me to say, as well as Warden, Karma Williams, they will be back next meeting, rest assured. Thank you. The adoption of the agenda, please.
It's moved by Counsel Wirt, seconded by Counsel McGillis, that council approve the agenda.
All in favor? Carrie? Any disclosures of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof? Seeing none, thank you. Adoption of the minutes.
Moved by Counsel McGillis, seconded by Counsel McDonald, that the minutes of the meetings, including the in-camera minutes of the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry held June 20th and 30th, 2022, be adopted as circulated.
All in favor? Carrie? This morning, we begin our meeting with a public meeting. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel Smith, that the public meeting to consider official plan amendments be opened at 9:02 a.m.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Mr. Young? Good morning, sir.
So I will just give a short presentation. We may have some people coming in to attend.
Through you, Mr. Warden, we could possibly have some members of the public that would like to speak today. We will record their names and contact information through the registration process, and that information will be kept on file. Should there be any members of the public unable to join us this morning who wish to provide comments related to the items considered, or who wish to be notified of the decisions, they can send an email to info@sdgcounties.ca. When the time comes for public comments or questions and you wish to speak, please proceed to the podium and turn the microphone on. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. So thank you, Deputy Warden and counsel. This public meeting is a forum for council members of the public to get information regarding two potential open official plan amendments to the United Counties official plan. The meeting's being held pursuant to Section 17 and 21, the Planning Act. It is exempt from approval by the Minister of Municipal Affairs, so the decision's final if there's no appeals received. And there's a couple of statements at the beginning that we read for the meeting that only individuals, corporations, public bodies may appeal a decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. A notice of appeal can't be filed by an unincorporated association or group. However, it can be filed on an individual on their behalf, and no person or public body shall be added as a party to the hearing unless they made comments, either written or oral, at the public meeting prior to adoption by council, unless in the opinion of the tribunal, there's reasonable grounds to add them as a party. So OPA 13 is for minor zoning amendments. Currently, many planning approvals require approval of a bylaw passed by a local or an upper-tier council, including OPAs, zoning amendments, part law control, site plan and subdivision. But new legislation that's now in effect allows certain bylaws to be delegated to either a committee of council or an officer or employee of the municipality before the local municipalities could take advantage of this. The idea is to kind of have delegated authority for minor or non-controversial amendments, but first, an amendment to the official plan is required to define what is actually minor. And councils have the ability to withdraw the authority of delegation, and it can be subject to conditions. So as you may know, in SDNG, we already have quite a bit of delegated authority for things that follow council's process. Doesn't mean it's exempt from public consultation or circulation or being seen by council, but sometimes the final decision, if there's no issues raised during the process, can be made by staff instead of needing to go to a future council meeting and take a longer So this, before we propose this, we met with the planners and clerks at the local municipalities, and we talked about what types of minor bylaws could be delegated. One of the top ones that was requested was a surplus dwelling zoning amendment. You've probably seen this at all of your councils many times, either through individual applications or through a housekeeping update. If this amendment would go through those applications, which typically don't have any, are circulated through the severance process, and there's usually no comments through the public meeting process. So surplus dwelling, if there's no objections, it's got conditional approval through the severance review. Local councils could choose to delegate that to the mayor and clerk to sign the final bylaw. There's a few other types of amendments mentioned here, for garden suites, temporary uses, lifting a holding symbol, provided all the documents, the subdivision agreements are signed off on, and part law control. In terms of who should be delegated, it's up to the local municipality, but the consensus with the clerks and planners is that the mayor and clerk sign a lot of the other, almost all the other bylaws, so they may be the ones to sign these bylaws upon recommendation of the planning department. And if there were objections, then a contested application would still be heard by council. And also, the municipalities could provide reports and listings of these bylaws, so council's aware of what decisions are made. So this is the proposed policy, so it's fairly high level in that municipalities would have the final say on the details of the bylaw, but there are specifics in terms of what would be considered minor, so it could be committee or it could be an officer or employee of the municipality. Again, the ones we talked about are ones that are condition of approval for a severance, where there are no objections received from the public and agencies. Zoning amendments for surplus dwellings, removing holding zones if all the agreements have been signed off on and agreed to. Temporary uses, and that's if the municipality wants to have temporary uses in their bylaw. And garden suites was another one that was requested, because they are technically a temporary use. Again, in the policy, we talk about that the municipality can have conditions, such as if there's an objection, that would go up to council. We also put that a municipality would not be required to hold a public meeting for a surplus dwelling. Again, that's the practice of some municipalities already in terms of having a housekeeping meeting rather than at the same time as the severance. So this would allow kind of a hybrid of that. It could still be signed off, but as long as there's no objections and the severance was approved by the counties, then the local mayor and clerk would be able to approve the bylaw without needing a second public meeting when there's already had one, when the severance was applied for. But again, to make sure that the public's aware that this could happen, the severance notices would be amended to have that information, so if they wanted to appeal the zoning, they could still, they'd still have the information. So this is the comments we received so far. Municipal affairs did not have any comments to provide, they just, the county should be satisfied that the notice requirements are met. We had a couple of calls from the public regarding what types of applications would not be subject to public notice or reduced notice, and we had some people that they wanted to attend, but once we kind of explained what this was about, they, I think they felt comfortable. But it's, it would be open to any comments or questions following my presentation. We had comments from the municipalities requesting that CIP amendments be considered for kind of delegated authority and notice requirements, so we'll bring that back when the bylaw goes to council. So I'll turn it back to Deputy Warden, and if there's any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Young. At this time, I would ask if there's any members of public here today, if they would like to make a comment, could step up to the microphone. Seeing none, if there's any members of the public online who would like to make a comment? Being none, if any members of council who would like to make a comment? Three for three. The next one, Mr. Young.
Thank you. So this is official plan amendment 14 for cannabis production facilities. So the current situation, why this is being brought to county council, is that the county official plan doesn't have specific policies on cannabis production. There's three municipalities out there with interim control bylaws, so that means they're freezing any new cannabis production facilities. And discussing with the planners at the three municipalities, we've kind of concluded that it would be great to have some more detailed policies before these new bylaws are updated. So the policy would have a definition of the cannabis production facility. It could be permitted in the rural agricultural resource lands or employment district, and then the zoning would be up to the local municipality, which zones they would like that permitted in. We had a request from one of the municipalities to direct the production facilities away from mixed-use corridors, including areas with tourism, highway, commercial uses, so that was put in the proposed policy, and that they're subject to site plan control. One of the concerns that, you know, site plan control, especially under the new legislation, is something that's delegated to staff now, and it's out of council's hands. So it's important to ensure that the policies are satisfying the interest in council in having good land use planning. So if it's in an agricultural area or industrial use, they would be required to demonstrate that they meet the land use compatibility guidelines outlined by the ministry, or the permitted uses for prime agricultural areas that's outlined by OMAFRA. And it wouldn't be considered a home occupation. Obviously, that doesn't mean that people would be able, still be able to have their own, their personal use, but a licensed facility would be a standalone use rather than accessory use. We also put in here, and it was definitely asked for by the municipalities, is having a list of studies upfront that would be required for a site plan or a zoning amendment, so including odor impact, light mitigation, agricultural impact assessment if applicable, traffic noise, hydrogeology, site servicing, again with the concerns of water and wastewater. So those, this policy would apply whether there would be a zoning amendment or a site plan control application. And that's so far what we got. We don't have any public comments, but the municipalities have been providing at the staff level some different input to this. So subject to council direction or any further comments, we would bring this bylaw back in August to county council.
Thank you, Director Young. Again, I ask if there's any members of the public present who would like to make a comment? Yes, ma'am? Could I ask you to please state your name and your address when you get to whichever mic? I guess you'll use Peter's microphone or the one to the side. All right, thank you. Good, yeah, thanks, Ben.
Thank you. My name's Jaclyn Milner, and I live in Summerstown Station. I'm glad to see this-
Sorry, ma'am, can you state your actual address, though?
I'm sorry?
Can you, could you please state your number, your role?
1-9-1-6-6 Hay Road.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Jaclyn Milner, I live in Summerstown Station. I'm very happy to see this come to the table. I had to, me and my community, had to deal with a cannabis production facility very close to my home, about five units over in a commercial development, which is very close to my home. We had to deal with stink 24 hours a day. I drive school bus part-time. I'd get in the, I'd get in the bus in the morning and have to deal with cannabis stink in the bus. Now, this might be a happy little diversion for people, and that's wonderful. People are free to do what they like, but for people in the neighborhood, residents having to deal with this, this is not pretty. So I'm very happy to see this amendment, shall we say, to the official plan, and the only thing I would encourage all of you to do and ask you to do personally is to ensure that there is definitive adverbs, adjectives used in the final draft. Must control odor. Must control light trespass in the community. I think that is what is required for the health and welfare of all the people that have to live near such a facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? No.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, or Acting Warden. Ma'am, I just had a question. The facility that you're referring to, was that an indoor facility or an outdoor facility?
Indoor.
It's an indoor one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would ask at this time, if there's any members of the public streaming, if they would like to make a comment? Nope? Okay. Members of council, any comments? Okay. Counselor Byvelt?
Thank you, Warden. I'd like to echo Jaclyn's comments. I know that South Dundas has had significant issues with some of the current ones, and we're also dealing with a few that have come to our plate, and as much as we have an interim control bylaw, it's been a challenge. I think strengthening policies at the county level is a good thing. It uniforms SDG into where we're going with cannabis. As much as it's an agricultural product, it is unique and it's older, and, excuse me, whether it's indoor or outdoor, it becomes a challenge in any kind of neighborhood. So this is a good start. It's a learning process, no doubt about it. Something that was brought to our plates because the federal government decided to do something, their challenge is they don't want to police it, and then that just lands up on our plate. Good start. We may or may not be able to pull off everything, but if you don't put it on paper now, then we'll never be able to start it all, so I certainly endorse what we're doing at the counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you to the members of the public who participated. Thank you to council for listening to this, these two presentations, and upon consideration of the comments made at this meeting, council will consider the bylaws for these items at the next county council meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a motion to move out of the public meeting, please?
It's moved by Counsel McGillis, seconded by Counsel Gardner, that the public meeting to consider official plan amendments be closed at 9:18 a.m.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. There are no delegations today, correct? So we will move right to action requests, transportation. Madam Clerk, you have a resolution for the firsts?
It's moved by Counsel Byvelt, seconded by Counsel McGillis, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry accept the proposal from Morrison Hirschfield to complete the design of the Inkerman Bridge rehabilitation for a total price of $59,252 plus HST, and that the Director of Transportation Services be authorized to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Michael? I'm just kidding. It's the last one, folks. Come on. They did, actually. That's a good, why are you guys still here? Sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
You can skip to the next bridge, and I can just get up and walk.
It's gonna be that easy.
So what we have here, Inkerman Bridge is a concrete box beam structure. There is degradation between two of the box beams roughly in the middle of the bridge. They may not be salvageable, so this is a design to likely replace the entire superstructure and to put new safety barriers, curbs, et cetera, on there. We received proposals from Morrison Hirschfield, WSP Jacobs, and we're recommending award to Morrison Hirschfield for the low price of $59,252 to complete the design.
Counsel comments? Questions? You see? Wasn't that far off? Thank you. All in favor? We will go for the second one, please. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel Gardner, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry accept the proposal from Jacobs to complete the design of the South Nation River Bridge rehabilitation for a total price of $58,490 plus HST, and that the Director of Transportation Services be authorized to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract.
All over to you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. So this bridge, South Nation River Bridge, is one of our biggest. It's a concrete girder structure with a concrete deck and safety barriers. Overall, this bridge is in fairly good shape. The safety barriers and the steel tubing, guide rail on top may not be salvageable or likely, are at end of life. The ash fault on top is in pretty poor condition. The concrete deck likely needs patching, but the girder structure underneath is in very good condition, save for the girder ends at the expansion joints. So what we need to do to this bridge to keep these girders serving for your decades to come is to repair those girder ends, replace those joints with the semi-integral conversion that we've been doing on a lot of bridges lately. So we received three proposals, again, WSP, Jacobs, Morrison Hirschfield, and we're recommending award to Jacobs for $58,490. I would just like to add, for both this bridge as well as the last one, that the prices were coming in well below budget, so we're very happy to see good pricing on these, and we're running a surplus on our proposals right now.
That's good news indeed. Any comments from council, questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk?
It's moved by Counsel Byvelt, seconded by Counsel Laundrie, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry accept the proposal from Shade Group Incorporated to complete the updates of engineers' reports associated with the County Road 22 reconstruction project for a total price of $54,071.20 plus HST, and that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry formally request the township of North Stormont to appoint Shade Group Incorporated as their drainage engineer in accordance with the Drainage Act, and that the Director of Transportation Services be authorized to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract contingent on the township of North Stormont, formally appointing Shade Group Incorporated as their drainage engineer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So this is a bit of a two-parter. First, we have the anticipated impacts to the municipal drains that are associated with the road reconstruction project, which we've committed to covering any costs of those impacts as part of our project. So in order to update the reports, the drainage engineer is required, and we've committed to hiring and covering the costs of that. However, the drainage engineer must be appointed by the township of North Stormont to officially perform that role. So the second part of this is that we're asking the township of North Stormont to appoint Shade Group as their consultant on this. So we've been working with the township of North Stormont on this process and how we will carry out the aspects of this appointment, and the township has been involved in this procurement process, and they were involved in reviewing the proposals, scoring the proposals, and they are in agreement, at least the drainage superintendent, Sean McDonald, is in agreement with appointing, recommending to appoint Shade Group as their consultant. As you will recall, we- As you will recall, we budgeted $500,000 to this project, so we are within budget. And that's, that's all I have for that.
Council comments, questions? Councilor Wirt?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment on the work that the county staff are doing. Ben and his team undertook a big, big project with this one. There's a lot of areas that have to be compiled in order to coordinate this project for next year. And just wanted to make sure council recognizes how efficiently it works with good communication between the counties and the township. I think we're gonna meet everyone's expectations. So just a comment. Thank you.
Great news. Thanks for the comment. Councilor Byveld?
Thank you, Warden. I'm glad to see that Shade Group's got this contract. We worked with them in South Dundas recently, and the, the drainage engineer is, is excellent to work with, very practical, and will certainly steer North Stormont and the counties in the right direction on getting this work done in a practical way. So highly recommend this group. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we've all heard the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Moved by Councilor Gardner, seconded by Councilor McDonald, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry authorize the Director of Transportation to purchase a vacuum street sweeper at an upset cost of $500,000 plus applicable taxes, and that a compliant unit be ordered through the Local Authority Services Municipal Group Buying Program, and that municipal modernization funding be used to offset the cost of this purchase with the balance included in the 2023 budget, and that, once delivered and in service, the unit be used by SDG on behalf of the county and all local municipalities to complete the collective street sweeping across the region on a cooperative cost recovery basis.
Thank you. Ben, are you speaking?
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna start, and, and we introduced Derek as our interim manager of operations a couple meetings ago, and Derek's here, and he's... Sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this at you, Derek. He's really leading the charge on this one, so I hope council agrees with it. I think it's an exciting opportunity for SDNG, not only here with our staff, but also to serve and provide a service to the local municipalities for what we see as very cost comparable to maybe, maybe what we'll call the best prices we're getting right now, which is, you know, hard, hard to find these days. So as, as noted in the resolution read by our clerk, what we're, this multi-part, multi-part, I guess, approval that we're looking for, because this is, much like anything else these days, we have to be planning a year, a year and a bit ahead to be able to get work done anymore, or to create, you know, buy things and be prepared to do work. So what we're looking for council's authority to do is give us a envelope to be able to go out and procure a street sweeper, a vacuum street sweeper, for 500, at an upset cost of 500 plus applicable taxes, so, you know, 500 or below, that we are able to use the Canoe Procurement Group of Canada to purchase that unit, which is, and actually, this is a service provided through LAS. So that's an offshoot of AML. It's a public procurement, like, it's essentially cooperative buying. And what they've done is they've gone out and, and it's not just sweepers, but all sorts of equipment, all sorts of products municipalities use. And I see us kind of moving towards this in the future. It's still relatively new, but it is something that, if council's really interested to hear more about, we have a local rep. Actually, one of the main, one of the main reps for the Canoe Procurement Group lives in Long Sioux, so I'm sure, maybe spoke at some of your councils, but would be happy to come in and talk to this council if there's some interest. But essentially, what they do is they go out and get pricing and, and whatnot for every kind of piece of equipment you can imagine a municipality needs. It's all done through a competitive process. If council wants to see the, the tender documents and all those kinds of things, we can have, we can share that with you. And what they do is secure bulk pricing for municipalities and government agencies. So it is, it is something that is permitted in our purchasing policy, but I wanted to make sure it's explicitly noted how we'd like to go ahead and procure this, this unit with council. And again, this is a great example of trying to start this, and hopefully, we can continue to use this to, to purchase equipment and other goods and services that are provided through that platform. So that's one part of what we're looking for council's approval for. The other part of it as well is using modernization funding, which we have $390,000 approximately of, of unallocated funding. And we, at a director's level, have been talking about what we might want to do with that. And whether the, I guess I, I get the, I kind of put my hand up first, so perhaps I get it first. But we felt that this was a great fit, just given that it is, it is a type of modernization. It's a different way of doing business, and, and I think it's a service that, again, we're gonna provide not only for SDNG, but all the local municipalities. And by starting this process right now, our intent is to be in service by 2023. And spring 2023 is a stretch, if I'm not mistaken, but it, but it is, but it is doable with council's approval. So what, what we wanted to provide to council, and Derek's here with me again because he's been really leading the charge on this and doing a lot of the research, and quite frankly, knows a lot more about sweepers than I ever would. What we've gone through is done a detailed financial analysis before we did come to council to make sure that, you know, it made sense from a, from a finance perspective. What we're looking for is a pretty typical unit that you'd see sweeping our streets. It's a single-engine type of conventional cab chassis unit. It has a multipurpose platform, so you have the side brooms, which are sweeping along the curb line, which you'll see in all the villages and whatnot. The other thing, the other advantage of the unit that we would recommend procuring is that it has a vacuum hose on the back, so we can actually use it for our catch basin cleaning, which is something we do on an annual basis. I believe local municipalities are also doing catch basin cleaning annually, or maybe every other year. So it is, and that is an important activity to do because the whole point of a catch basin, it's got a sump underneath, it collects all the debris. That's where you're supposed to clean it out. The catch basin's performing a, like a sediment removal function. So very important that you clean that out regularly so that the sediment doesn't just pass through that catch basin. It actually is getting caught and not going downstream. So, so this is a multi, multipurpose platform, multipurpose unit. When we looked at the financials of this, we made some assumptions, which we felt was very fair based on how we're kind of procuring and renting out sweepers annually right now. So we're expecting, and, and maybe this includes municipal use as well. So we're estimating 600 hours of annual use of, of the unit. We're estimating approximately 10 hours of use per day, which is equivalent to 60 paid days of service per year. When we consider 70% efficiency on this, it means it's sweeping for 420 hours, and then the remaining 30% of its hours are going to, from the site, traveling between sites, unloading, loading, you know, filling up with water, maintenance, that kind of stuff. Again, with, we are estimating as well, just based on some discussions with manufacturers, $450,000 to $475,000 to purchase the unit that I described in the previous slide. So when we look at the ownership cost to SDNG, if we were to proceed, if we were to purchase at $450,000, so the low end of that range, it ends up being $508,000 with taxes, although we do get it in HST rebate. But I'm gonna use the tax-in number for this analysis. Again, we're expecting 10 years of service life. If we depreciate 15% per year, our end-of-service-life value is around $89,000. The, the, the end-of-service life, the 10 years, after 10 years, and if there's some questions about this, Derek, I know, can, can explain it a little bit better. But because of the nature of the, the way this unit works, like, it's sucking up debris, it's dirt, it actually can wear out the components inside, all of the, the vacuum and the chambers and whatnot. So after 10 years, usually these units are more or less done, and you need to replace everything on top of the cab and chassis. Is that a?
Yeah, it'd be severe overhaul, yes.
Yeah, okay. So you're looking at a, a major overhaul to keep this thing in service after 10 years if it's being used the way we expect it to be used. So our total value of the unit is $419,000. So that's your capital cost minus your end-of-service-life value. And so if that's over a 10-year period, you're looking at $41,000 a year, cost of ownership, or about $700 a day, or 70 bucks an hour at 10 hours a day. So pretty straightforward math in terms of what that looks like, an hourly cost of ownership for this unit. When we get into the operational side, we are making some assumptions. We assume $25 per hour for fuel, and that's an estimate of 30 liters per 100 kilometers, and kind of breaking that out, and that's a very, I think, generous estimation of fuel cost. From a maintenance perspective, we expect we'd be spending about $8,500 per season, which then equates back to $14 per hour. And the maintenance, you're looking at replacing brooms. You have a curb runner that needs to, that'll wear out as you're driving against curbs. There's a bunch of seals on, on the vacuums that need to be replaced on an annual basis, your hoses, your safeties that you need to do annually, tires, general repairs. So there's, that's how that $8,500 is, is calculated. From a labor perspective, if it's at 10 hours, we've got a blended hourly rate of $38 an hour to, to have a person that's driving this unit. And of course, we do need to put some water in it, although a small cost. There is a cost associated with the water. There's an example of something, if we're working for local municipalities, I don't think that we would be charged for it, but it is a cost that we need to make sure we include in the overall. So when you combine all that, you're at $80 an hour to operate. So putting it all together, if you're $70 an hour to own it, $80 an hour to operate it, your total combined cost is $150 per hour. And again, that's thinking of 600 hours per year over a 10-year period. If you use it more than 600, some of those, you know, it actually lowers that hourly cost out. And then the, the flip side of that, too, is if you use it less than 600 hours, it is more expensive. But I think at 600 hours, we felt that that was a very reasonable estimate of, of how often or how busy this unit would be. For comparison, just, and this is, you know, we did that calculation, then we went back to our hourly quotation for a contracted sweeper, which is, we have, on an annual basis, we, we put out an hourly tender for equipment. So that hourly quotation for the contracted sweeper is $150 an hour. So it's very comparable to what we've calculated in terms of our cost to own. And I do want to note as well, and I know all of you probably had to deal with this with the public, but the village sweeping tender this year was 300% greater than what it had been in previous years. And although, and, and there's some roads that still aren't swept yet, so we're at the mercy of that contracted sweeper. That, that, that tender wasn't awarded because it ended up, the equivalent was about 400 bucks an hour. So it was quite, quite expensive, and, and we didn't award it. We've been trying to work with your local municipalities to get some streets swept, but the reality is, there's just really nobody in the area that's providing this service anymore. So you're at the mercy of when you can get people in the area and around the area to do this work. So just final thoughts from our perspective. What, what this does, if council agrees, gives us the ability to control when sweeping takes place at a similar cost to what we're paying a private contractor to do it right now. One of the big advantages that I see as well, that we could get to 16 hours of productivity per day at the end of the, of the winter season, when we have night shift staff that are working night hours, because at that time of year, unless there's, you know, significant weather, they're, they're busy kind of dismantling the trucks and, and kind of preparing for spring. But we have that, that HR capacity to be able to put somebody on this unit and start the sweeping. And quite frankly, we have a staff member that used to operate a sweeper that works night shift. So we have a well-qualified staff person that'd be able to start that service at the end of the night season and start, you know, by mid-April, we could be well on our way of getting villages swept. And the other thing is the, the versatility of this unit. We've got a whole bunch of things that it provides us the ability to do. So that's bridge sweeping, catch basin cleaning, a bunch of other type of small vacuum excavation type of work. I think, you know, from our perspective, it opens up a lot of doors for us and gives us a little bit of versatility in terms of what we can do and how we can help not only maintain our roads, but help with the local municipalities. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Questions, comments from council? Okay, we'll have Councilor Gardner, and then Councilor Laundrie, and then Councilor McDonald.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Just a quick question, and it may not apply specifically to the street sweeper, but you're looking at a 10-year commitment. I'm just wondering, is there any other technology than a gas-powered vehicle? Because, I mean, in 10 years, by all intents and purposes, I won't be driving a gas-powered, probably in five years, actually. So I'm just wondering, like, whether it's propane, whether it's whatever, because we're adding this new, new to the fleet, and it may not apply for a street sweeper, but there, you know, I'm just, it's, it, when you look at 10 years, 32, right? We're gonna look, we're gonna look, if we haven't at least had the conversation and see what the options are, we'll be behind, behind the ball a bit. So thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, I'll touch on that a little bit. There is new technologies coming out, and actually, the sweeper we're proposing right now is part of new technology. A lot of the older sweepers are two-engine unit. So you have the main engine that powers the cab and chassis, and then the engine that runs the sweeper in the back. This unit here is the technology, and now it only runs off the one engine. So the one engine's doing both duties. They have their patent pending, their system in place, that they're able to run the RPMs up high enough to run the sweeper and drive down there at the same time. So that is new technology we're actually working with. Saves fuel, it also saves a carbon footprint, plus it also saves the downtime with regen, and plus all your extra maintenance. So we, we have looked into that part. There is talk of electric, like you talked about. I don't think it's there yet. Part of the problem is just the, the timeline for regen, for charging back up, everything else. I think right now, this is probably our best option for the area that we're covering. We use up so much battery time just getting to the job site that we may not have the efficiencies that we have here right now. But we are looking at new technologies, yes.
Thank you. Councilor Laundrie?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I know right now you're, you're just coming to us for, for the ask. I'll push it to 2023, so when it does move forward and, and you're looking at sweeping. So the timeline is very narrow when you get to the spring. And I understand that if you want to be first out of the gate, there's a premium to be paid if you're gonna delay. I'm just, have you put any thought of, we're dealing with six municipalities. You got, I'm not sure how many hamlets, but to deal with the, the municipal side of things, how, have you put a plan together, how that would work as far as saying if, if we're all utilizing that one sweeper and making it work in the timelines? Because it is a sensitive subject when you come to spring in, in our subdivisions. Council, most of the years, I get the call saying, hey, when is this happening? So maybe just a thought, if, if there was any thoughts put into this, yet or not? Thanks.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair. You're talking about the logistics of how we're gonna accomplish this. Do we have a full plan in place? No. Do we have a thought process? Yes. Like I said, we do have two staff currently working for us that previously ran these type of sweepers, so they're very familiar with them. Talking with them, previous contractors they worked for doing street sweeping, they did do all SDNG plus the municipalities at the same time. So there's efficiencies there to be had. So basically, when we're, they're starting with municipalities, we're also catching the SDNG portions between villages. So you're basically starting at one end, working your way across, and catching everything in one pass. The exact timeline, if we're gonna start in Winchester first, or Lancaster first, we haven't put that in place, but we have looked at the efficiencies. Ben also touched on is the fact that we start this in the late spring. We still have night shift. We're also able to accomplish longer periods. So right now, if you're using a contractor, you're at their whim when they're starting and stopping. So it's usually 7:00, 8:00 o'clock in the morning, maybe, and they're done 3:00 o'clock, or 4:00 o'clock, whatever it may be. We're hoping to be on the road, kind of thing, 6:00 o'clock in the morning, carrying right through to our maximum time till probably 11:00 o'clock for some noise bylaws in towns. Now, for talking about bylaws in towns, we can't do it for the noise, but we might be able to use that same machine after 11:00 o'clock on some bridges we have in the middle of nowhere that would need cleaning. So we're trying to maximize the amount of hours that, you know, is running within a 24-hour period to try and get over and above what contractor would normally do.
Can I just add subsequently, before we go to Councilor McDonald? So another question, and maybe the, the technology has changed, but I know the last go that we had this done. I received a video of one sweeper going through, and it is a dusty process, and it's either, do you want your street swept or not? Is there new tech, I know there's water being thrown on the brushes. Is there new technology that minimizes that, or is that just part of the, the process?
Through you, again, Mr. Chair. There's basically three types of sweepers. You get mechanical, regen, and vacuum. So the mechanical is, is bad for dust. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what type of sweeper you're talking about. So mechanical is basically, it's just a big broom sweeps everything through the middle, and there's a conveyor, picks up the dirt, dumps it in a hopper. There's a regen, which is basically a big blower, blows down through a tube, and just, it's kind of a vacuum suction pulling back up in. Then there's a vacuum sweeper, which basically wets and sucks everything up like a steam cleaner, like a vacuum cleaner in your house. The one we're looking at is the vacuum one. So I know, like, with, especially in the spell of roads with stone dust, you have a lot of dust. So you can go through and pick up all the granular part, but it's gonna leave a lot of the residual dust on the road, and you're gonna get those complaints later on, yes, dust. The idea with the vacuum sweeper is, it sucks up all those particles. It's a, well, 75 to 90% pickup rate compared to the other ones are about 30 to 40%.
Thank you. Councilor McDonald? Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Wirt? Counselor Wirt?
Yeah, through you, through the chair, just another comment in favor of this report. I think there's a balance with everything, and whenever we get to the budget process, we've seen figures in the course of the last two years that I don't think were supportable, like we've got companies taking advantage essentially of the market right now. And I think directly, this is a smart way to spend money, but indirectly, it may send a message to the industry that the balance has to be maintained, otherwise, this stuff will be coming in-house, and I fully support that for the benefits that it's gonna provide us directly and indirectly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGinnis?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I fully support what Counselor Wirt said. You seem that, Derek, you covered all your bases, you've done your homework, you seem to know exactly what we need. You know, if you look at the feasibility of it, I mean, we're gonna control the usage of it, so I think that this is the way to go. I know in our municipality in South Stormont, with the garbage, we put out tenders, and then we put our own tender out to see if it was feasible, and you were there then, and it was a lot more feasible for the municipality, and lowering the tax rate for us to do it, to do the job ourselves, so it really paid off, and we're still doing it now, so, but something like this is similar. So I think that, I want to thank you for doing all your homework, and I will support this wholeheartedly as well. Thank you.
Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, question for maybe Ben, or both Derek and Ben. Is this gonna be, well, has it been considered the logistics or the time available to do, let's say, municipal parking lots? Would that be part of the package that it could be hired for, or contracted for? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think as long as it doesn't conflict with our other work, I mean, if we've got a good handle on pricing and operational costs, it may be that, you know, and this is always the perennial discussion with the insurer, whether we put, it's our staff in the back, in the seat, or somebody else in the seat, a local municipal staff member in the seat. Yeah, I think, I think there's an opportunity there. I don't want to commit wholeheartedly, because if the expectation is it's done, while we still have to finish Lancaster, for example, like, to me, the street sweeping takes the priority rather than the municipal parking lots, but, but that being said, if the unit's sitting there and not being productive, and it's, you know, the taxpayers of SD and G have paid for it, and it can benefit one of us, why wouldn't we? And that's, I think, you know, quite frankly, our philosophy all along, if it makes sense, and, you know, our taxpayer, it makes sense for the taxpayers, why wouldn't we? Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Jaworski?
Thank you, through you, Warden. Couple comments. I never gave street sweeping much thought until this year, where I had calls from residents saying, why has the sweeper not come through? And that's when I learned that we have this shortage. And so definitely, I wanted to mention that residents do notice when they don't get this service. And with respect to the why of doing this, you know, the, I'm sure it's many things coming together, like labor shortage, cost of gas, I'm assuming insurance for these private contractors, too, is playing part, and I think that's something, a pressure that we're gonna have for a few years yet. So I think it makes sense to go through, I mean, try this approach at this point. And I think in terms of the cooper, like what Counselor Fraser was mentioning, in terms of additional uses, I assume you're going to get much more utilization out of this unit than what you've calculated here. So I think, and I think these kind of things really make sense in terms of spreading out the cost. Lastly, just wanted to touch on what Counselor Gardner said about going electric, where I think that's really, definitely something we should always be looking at, but I think in this case, because if we're trying to get almost twenty-four-hour utilization out of it, we just won't have the charging time. Like, it works well for, like, waste trucks, where they can, you know, they don't operate overnight, and they can charge overnight. So I think in this case, maybe not. Maybe for something like this, it's more like a hydrogen option than you might want to be considering for the future. But I support this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments? Counselor Byveld?
Thank you, Warden. One question, and then a comment. Have you any philosophy of how you're gonna charge lower tiers on usage? Because there has to be some sort of cost to the county, to be fair to the county. We're here as county councilors, so what are you gonna charge? What you're, I'm not expecting a charge that would make money, but a charge that's fair on both sides. What, any philosophy on that right now?
I see it no different than any of the other work we work cooperatively on, where it's really cost recovery, like, it's cost recovery. So my thought, and Derek and I really haven't, you know, delved into it at this point, but my thought is, you know, we make an assumption in terms of our costs, and I think we provided council with some ideas of those today, and it's just on that basis. And then we, you know, go back, look at our numbers at the end of the year, double-check, make sure they're in line, out of line, whatever it might be, adjust, and continue on that way. But, you know, we, anything we do, we never do it for profit. It's always, you know, cost recovery, this is for the taxpayers, and we just want to make sure we're not, you know, that it's fair for everybody. So that's, that would be my philosophy, so.
You know, there's large support, and I'm not denying that it's not a, possibly a good purchase. The challenge always is that, how do we make a piece of machinery that needs to be done in a short period of time, very efficient? You suggested the night shift, but that'll die faster than you think, and then all of a sudden, you're mid-April, and you need bodies, and running from seven to three doesn't work when you need to get done from seven to five, if there's enough daylight, or seven to six. So you may have to look at those. You've done, we've pushed that in the mowing side of things, and I see progress there. This is gonna be the same thing. How do you keep a five-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of machinery that needs a short period of time to get, it's like combining on the farm. Now, things gotta run when it has to run, and then you hope, you know, and you gotta be also aware of the maintenance. I can see something like that really being very costly upkeep, things that, you know, that's part of the deal, and you've done as good a job as you can with the experience you have, but since it's something that needs to run, you know, as I said, in a short period of time, then you gotta come up with a philosophy that, how do I keep it running? And that may cost more down the road, or there's other ways of doing it, and double-shifting, or whatever you have to do to make it go. But that'd be my recommendation, because that's how the private sector works, they're not gonna, you know, we can keep those sweepers running, day, night, whatever, as long as the machine runs. You can't do that at the counties, and that's always been a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any final comments? Well, thank you, gentlemen. The only comment that I would make is that I as well agree that, well, especially since we're down to basically two companies, and one of which hardly ever responds, because they're so busy and doing more work in Ottawa, which pays significantly more than we would be willing to pay or capable of paying. I would just give my two cents in that I think that the hardest issue of this will be your scheduling, because, you know, we've had some fairly robust discussions over who can get the speed limit signed. So I would imagine that the sweeper as well will be of quite interest, and I would just humbly suggest that when you do make your logistics work, because the geography works against you. There'll be a lot of time floating between hamlets and villages, and, you know, the distances are significant, when you have to load up a piece of equipment, chain it, do all those sort of things, takes time, takes time out of an eight-hour day, for sure. Perhaps you would consider, when you make your schedule, whichever side or whichever quadrant you're gonna start in, perhaps the next year, you would just flip them, so that everybody's getting, you know, on a schedule and understanding, yeah, why did, why did Jimmy get it earlier this year? Well, you'll get it earlier next year, that sort of thing. But anyway, that's, that's just my own personal opinion. All right, we've all heard the question, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk, the final one?
Moved by Counselor Byveld, seconded by Counselor Smith, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry approve the attached job description and salary classification, job class, for the position of forestry coordinator, and that council authorize the commencement of the recruitment process for an individual to assume this position, and that the county organizational chart, Schedule A to bylaw number 5038, a bylaw to set remuneration for non-union staff, and any other relevant documents be amended to reflect the above changes.
Thank you. Mr. Don?
Thank you. So this was a position that we had a discussion about during budget deliberations. I will, and I note this in my report, the budget, when we talked about it during budget deliberations, we had identified some municipal modernization funding to offset the expense this year, and that is no change in terms of how we'd like to proceed this year. We did talk about at that point that it was more of a, we'll call it a contract position, with the intent that we'd assess how things were going, not how things were going to make it sound like there was anything going wrong, but the weed inspector had identified that they were gonna be retiring in the near future, and looking to potentially incorporate that, those duties into this position, and look to, you know, essentially demonstrate its value and its worth, and then create a full-time position. That, as council is aware, the weed inspector has retired, and you're looking at one of the, one of the other weed inspectors within the county right now, and quite honestly, I think we're at a point where the melding of those two positions makes sense right from the outset, and actually creating, creating value in the position right away. So that's what's being recommended in front of council today. We have gone through the typical job creation and scoring process to determine where it lands on the grid. We have a full gamut of responsibilities, duties, and activities that, quite frankly, are just not being done right now. So there's a lot of value, and a lot of, there's a lot of work to be done, you know, provided council approves this, and the position is filled. Just in terms of creating forest use policies, you know, that's been a big project, that's been overhanging, creating, you know, doing some of these activities that are needed at each forest, that, you know, we do hire South Nation to do right now, which we can, and nothing, nothing against South Nation, they do an excellent job for us, but it's things that don't require, like, a forester to do. We can, we can do it if we just have the time and resources to be able to do it. The other value add to this position, particularly from an operational perspective, is, I mean, you drive around the roadsides, and you see just a pile of dead trees, and trees that require attention because of, you know, embold ash bor, or Dutch elm disease and these things. Our patrol supervisors do a magnificent job of trying to stay ahead of it, but it's quite overwhelming for them, and it is something that we feel we could, we could identify for one person to do, and this is the person to do it. So they would look after actually going out, assessing, you know, what needs to be done, creating tenders, looking after, making sure that work gets done. We do do a combination of in-house and contracted tree removal work, but, you know, quite frankly, when it's the big trees that are adjacent to the roadsides, you need the specialized equipment, and you get a contractor in. So we see this person being able to do that work. Beyond that, so the point of me saying that is that we do have some existing budgetary kind of capacity to help offset the cost of this position. Right now, we're budgeting two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, for example, for roadside tree removal, and I'm not suggesting the entire, the entire salary would come from that, but what I'm saying is administrative time we could put towards that, which is necessary anyway, which is done. It's just we're reallocating who's doing what, and it helps to offset some of those costs. Again, from the weed inspector, over the past ten years, the average was about eighty-five-hundred dollars in wages per year, and that varied. There was some years, I think, we're closer to fourteen, and some were less. Like COVID, we saw quite a significant drop. I think this year, if we were to, if I was to look in terms of how many hours we're spending, we're kind of tracking back up to where we had used to be. So there is some offset expenditure already in that position. So, you know, by and large, that's, I think, the gist of what we're looking, you know, or I guess what's being proposed here for council. The job description is attached, I think, for, and I think it's very comprehensive, and very, you know, it encompasses the things we need this type of position to do, and yeah, I guess from there, we'll, I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions from council? Counselor Byveld?
Thank you, Warden. Approximately how much savings we'll have from the SNC? You've got fifty-eight grand we're paying SNC, and that, that account just keeps on creeping, creeping, as we keep on getting more and more forests, and then, you know, the thinking is, well, why don't we just give the forest SNC? We don't have to look after them, but that never works here. But how much cost savings do you think there will be there? Because that's the first question, and I got a few others.
I don't, so the way I wrote it in my report is, I don't see that there is going to be, I see it'll either remain status quo or slightly drop, but I think we can maintain that, and then as the years go on, continue to either maintain that or reduce it, where you would generally see, like, to your point, you see it increasing. You know, this person is not a qualified forester, so regardless of, we still need someone to go in and mark trees to supervise harvest, and then also do the certifications of our forest for the sustainable forest certification. So there are activities that just this person is not specialized to do. But that being said, you know, for example, like, every year, we find one or two wells, abandoned wells on our forest properties, that, you know, we, South Nation, they, you know, they go out to look to make sure it is an actual well, because the complaint comes in, then they coordinate the contractor to come in and actually properly cap the well. Like, that's the kind of thing that we can do. So, you know, if we budget through, we have like a three-thousand-dollar-a-year budget for well, well, abandoned well capping and finding, like, that's the kind of thing that our staff will be able to do going forward. So it's gonna be minor stuff at the beginning, and I think as time goes on, we'll continue to massage that and reduce it. But we will always need the, we will always need the service of a professional forester for the, you know, maintaining our harvest, helping with our management plans, as well as marking and all those things that go along with a certified forest.
So you've, again, another question in my mind, you ever, you're suggesting that this person will not have that type of degree of experience or certification. Do you ever envision someday either that person having it, or another person doing it, so we don't, we accumulate enough inventory, enough cost to do it ourselves?
Yeah, that is a possibility. I see that this individual will, you know, that's something that they would eventually be tasked with, when we're looking at kind of strategic direction of forests, it may be a possibility. You know, recall, like, South Nation is a contractor for us, they, you know, think of them as a contractor. Forest marking is a contracted service, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to use South Nation to do it. Again, I think we get a lot of value, and I don't want to, I don't want to say that, you know, we don't appreciate and love the work that South Nation does, we do. But, but it is something that this, you know, this individual, if there's cost savings to be had, we have to think about tax dollars, and if there's, you know, there's a financial, just like we just went through with our last report, if there's a financial benefit to doing something a little different, why the heck wouldn't we do it?
Thank you. So going on, the weed inspector thing, like, I'll just make this comment, that you may be challenged finding a person that loves the environment, loves forests, but also wants to spray weeds in your, in roadsides, because it seems like philosophies are either one side or the other, the merry one is real hard. You know, the one thing that a weed inspector benefits greatly from, and we had that with Mr. Leonard's ag experience, in dealing with farmers, and dealing with both sides, and Peter's done an excellent job, I know Peter for a long enough time, that, you know, he could, he can handle that, and do it in a very professional way. Marrying the two, sounds good on paper, but it may or may not work. So we'll see how, what we get for applications, unless you already have an idea who is gonna apply, but as I said, you know, the philosophies may be challenged because of it. I'll just make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other council members? All right, we've all heard the resolution, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to tenders and quotations.
Moved by Counselor Gardner, seconded by Counselor Byveld, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry accept the tender from Edgewater Sewer Services Incorporated for culvert lining for four-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars plus HST, and authorize the Director of Transportation Services to sign all necessary documents to give effect to the contract.
Ben?
Thank you. Very quickly, a joint tender with South Glengarry, who is actually doing quite a significant pile of work, which is great. So, you know, bundling the work gives us good value, and we're appreciative that they're joining us on this. It's within budget, and we look forward to council's consideration of this.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Moved by Counselor Wirt, seconded by Counselor McDonald, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry direct the Director of Transportation Services to reject the tenders for Eastman Creek culvert lining and re-budget, re-tender this project in 2023.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, I'll take this one. Thank you. So what we have here are two culverts on County Road Forty-two, just outside of the city of Cornwall limits. They are in a fairly advanced state of degradation, and we, we can extend their life by lining the bottoms with concrete, and we put together a price. Unfortunately, what we anticipated for the cost was just far too low. We do see a pretty consistent spread on the prices from the four contractors, but we just don't have that money in the budget, and so we're requesting that it be rejected, and we try again next year with some more consideration onto what it would cost, and what's the best thing for these culverts.
Thank you. Comments, questions from council? Comments, questions from council? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Moved by Counsel Smith, seconded by Counsel Wirt, that the Council of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry accept the rack rate price from W O Stinson &amp; Sons plus delivery fee until June 30th, 2025, for the supply and delivery of propane for both SDG and the township of South Stormont.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a very straightforward delivery, you know, tied to a rack price for supply of propane. We use propane at our Winchester Springs shop for heating. South Stormont uses it at a variety of different locations, so just looking for council's approval. I do want to note, South Glengarry has approached us to participate in this tender, so we're going to work with the contractor, provided council approves it, work with the contractor to get them involved, and we'll, if there's other municipalities that are interested, please let us know, and we can continue to work with them. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. We'll move on to bylaws, delegation of authority, madam clerk.
It's moved by Counsel Laundrie, seconded by Counsel McDonald, that bylaw number 5364, being a bylaw to delegate council's authority for restricted acts after nomination day, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Counsel Byvolds?
Thank you, Warden. I will say the timing is better this time than early spring, and I think we're confident that things will happen the way they are, but at least we're at a point that this council has got what we need to get done, and if we get into a situation, we're comfortable with what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Cao Simpson?
Sure, thank you. Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, you will notice, though, we brought this bylaw back as part of the reconsideration process, but today before you, it has changed slightly. We did have to add provisions for the replacement of Cao Simpson as a result of his pending retirement, and we did also add a provision that allows us to extend the OPP contract if the Police Services Board and Council wishes to do so. It does expire at the end of the year, and the municipal election calendar does throw a wrench in that schedule, so we'll be able to do that, extend it for one year, hopefully. So we did run these provisions by our legal counsel, Tony Fleming, and I think we're good to go moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cao, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, the clerk covered it very well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. The Official Plan Amendment Number 12.
Moved by Counsel Wirt, seconded by Counsel Smith, that bylaw number 5365, being a bylaw to adopt Official Plan Amendment Number 12 to the official plan of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry, be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed.
Thank you. Director Young?
Thank you very much, counsel. This is for an official plan amendment in North Dundas, a garage that started as a home industry is now looking at expansion and getting the proper zoning for the use, so we're recommending approval of this bylaw. It's already gone through North Dundas Council, who has supported it.
Thank you. Council comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Moved by Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel Laundrie, that all items listed under the Consent Agenda section of the agenda be received for information purposes.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on anything contained within the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk? Okay, we have boards and committees, we'll start with the Warden's report. Obviously, I won't have any report for it, and Warden Williams is not here, but perhaps, Mr. Simpson, you could speak to it?
I can't speak directly to some of the activities she partook over the last month, but certainly we, I can report that we had a N O W C meeting here in SDNG on Thursday and Friday, so we had the Warden's Caucus members here, and the big item for discussion at that meeting was preparing for AMO, and the Warden's Caucus priority this year being affordable and sustainable housing. So they've put together a briefing note for the ministers, multi-ministers delegation in AMO, and essentially, what they're going to be going forward with is, you know, the province wants to build one and a half million units over the next 10 years, so the Warden's Caucus is saying, we want to partner with you, there's a lot of moving parts on it, but we want to partner with you to build our share, so there's servicing considerations to make sure that the servicing and the dollars are in place to make it happen, both rent geared income and market rent units, zoning and whatnot provisions are in place, and that shovel-ready conditions are ready. So where the zoning's in place, where's the servicing in place, things similar, what we're talking to the city of Cornwall with, as well as your local planner. So it's a comprehensive package, and essentially, the message is, we want to work with you to make these units happen. So that was essentially the bulk of the meeting, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. Jointly as on committee, we haven't had a meeting yet. Library Board, Counsel Smith, could you speak to that? Okay, thank you. Police Services Board, Counsel Wirt?
No, we don't have nothing to report. I'm at the last meeting.
Thank you. Eastern Ontario Health Unit, Counsel Gardner?
We did have a meeting mid-June, and obviously, the conversation unfortunately continues to be about COVID. We did just receive an update where I think everybody would have seen that, where the COVID vaccination booster has, the age has been increased, so Dr. Paul continues to encourage everyone to do that. We do still have low upticks, and we do appear to be in the seventh wave, I think, eighth wave. So unfortunately, it still takes over much of the discussion.
Thank you. Glenn Storedon Lodge, Counsel Byvolds?
Thank you, Warden. We didn't have a meeting, but there was some activity at the lodge. Stephen Golden, who has been the administrator for the last year and a half, has resigned in his place. A familiar name to SDG Cornwall, Miles Cassidy has taken on that role for now, to get the lodge to the next person that will be running it, so everything is still functioning there, no major issues that I can report. Thank you.
Thank you. St. Lawrence River Institute, Counsel Gardner?
Nothing to report, but they do have summer camps going on, and Counsel Jaworski said that her son thought it was, daughter, thought it was fantastic.
That's good to hear. Municipal Advisory, Algonquin Land Claim, Mr. Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing to report.
Thank you. Eastern Ontario Agri-Food, nope, and Regional Emergency Response Council as well, though I'm sure the Warden will fill us in on the next meeting. Key information, project updates. Mr. Dehan?
All right, so our first update is the paving program. Unfortunately, the cost of asphalt cement has continued to rise, up 6.8% over last month. Our asphalt recycling program, which does use a little bit of AC, was well accounted for, and again, we're not anticipating any payouts as part of that program. The work there, under both contracts, is almost complete, there is just a section of County Road 2 left. The hot mix paving program uses significant amounts of AC, and at the moment, we are anticipating a AC adjustment of approximately 1.375 million, and our adjustment reserve for this is at 1.8 million, so we are getting pretty close to the amount of money that we have set aside for this. Our big item here is that if council does have any concerns or objections at this time, we'd like to discuss, have that discussed as soon as possible, as there are opportunities, at least now, to try and explore options to avoid further cost overruns. However, we are anticipating that hot mix will be done by the end of the month, and there's very little quantities out in the field left that we can look at heading off, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions concerning the first one? Okay, we'll move on to 12.2, please. I'm sorry, did I miss someone? Oh, sorry, Counsel Wirt?
Through the chair, and my knowledge on this AC adjustment continues to need to be updated here, but the fuel industry has had tremendous volatility, and we've tied that all to these cost overruns, which we've all agreed that we were going to support. But the fuel industry now is starting to show that the market is correcting, and there is a little bit of relief coming in the pipeline, but the AC adjustment is month to month? Okay, that wasn't the answer I was hoping for, so. Okay, sorry, thank you.
If I may too, like, our, there is a little bit of a lag there, and actually, if you really want to get enlightened on AC, speak with Counsel Jaworski, she's in the industry and has some pretty interesting insight into that. Sorry, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, but it's like, it's very, it's very interesting, and it is, yes, it's end of the month, and it's reflective of previous months, so we're still kind of stuck in it, and the fact that we're going to be done as things start to go down is the reality of what we're faced with.
Thank you. So good. And Counsel Jaworski, you don't want to come out as being exposed as our mole right now? Would you like to speak to it? No?
I mean, unfortunately, we're in a situation right now, we're in the situation we're in, we have a contract built the way the contract's built, but, you know, maybe in the future, you might want to look at, you don't necessarily have to have a contract built in the same standard format, you can, you know, propose things that have discounts off the AC index price. You don't necessarily just have to take it as it's posted.
Thank you. Counsel Wirt, did you have a comment for that?
Yeah, I don't, through the chair, I don't want to belabor this, but I guess what I look at here is that just about everything in the market today is subject to opportunities to speculate, and there's an opportunity here, I think, that smart pencils would be taking a look at, and maybe that's a discussion that can be had at budget, that in the fertilizer industry, in the commodity markets, and everything else, you find your threshold for comfort and are prepared to commit to it, and maybe stay away from some of these more volatile situations, but that's a discussion for later. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, now we will move on to 12.2.
Sorry, I'll resume with this set of updates, there's bridge discussions.
No, 12.2 is the County Road 34. All right?
We're still on 12.1.
Oh, okay, I thought you were done. Thank you.
So that was pavement. Our CCTV contract for storm sewers, we've had some developments. Contractor started in Alexandria and Green Valley and found it very difficult to shut down any lanes with the amount of traffic on County Road 34. They proposed an alternative technology that we weren't very familiar with beforehand, which would still provide us with the information that we're looking for to update our storm sewer asset index, and provide the information that we need to build that out at a lower cost, however, it may not give us all of the information on the condition of the entire length of storm pipe. Right now, what we're looking at is they'll implement this new technology, we'll review the information that we receive, we should have funds left over in the program to go back out and conventionally flush and CCTV any lengths of storm sewer that weren't assessed. So the program is being sort of re-scoped on the fly, but we're anticipating a budget surplus and all the information that we require, so we don't see any issues there, it's just we want to keep council informed of what the program was turning into. Black Creek Bridge is not moving along at the pace that we had hoped for, the concrete supplier wasn't able to provide the aggregates required approximately two weeks ago when the contractor on site was ready for them, so we are facing some scheduled delays there. We've completed all of the Phase 1 removals, the conventional concrete has gone back in, we've seen the additional costs to that that were greater than anticipated, approximately $33,000, and which, if we expand into Phase 2, we're anticipating 65,500 roughly of additional cost to this bridge. Despite all of that, this is still the first bridge anticipated to be completed this year and resumed two-way traffic. The contractor, this was a joint tender with South Stormont, the contractor is mobilizing to LeFave Bridge this morning, just east of St. Andrews, and starting that work. East Castor River Bridge is moving along fairly well, there's limited additional costs on this due to the degradation of the rebar, there's some new connectors that they're going to be putting in to tie between Phase 1 and Phase 2, but those come at a small cost, approximately $5,000, and the switch over is anticipated for August 2nd, and completion is anticipated for August, October 4th, sorry. Ferguson Bridge moving along very, very well, remains on budget, remains on schedule, not much to report there. Miscellaneous culvert replacements and culvert lining contracts, so the in-water work window opened on July 15th. Just a correction here, I have Hoseck Bridge is starting July 11th, that should say 18th, that's this morning. The excavators were mobilized to site over the weekend, contractor is putting up the road closure signage, and the next step is going to be the de-watering and fish salvage, so we're going to start to see a lot of activity there, starting today and over the next approximately 30 days. The Dorn Bay culvert replacement, we've had some discussions with, everything was in place to do this work, we've got the design, the contractor is awarded, we've got the permits to proceed, we were asked to reexamine an opportunity to stage this construction and maintain one lane open during the work, and we understand the desire for that due to, you know, the road network. We don't have any convenient detours, the 401 is there, but it's being worked on right now, so it's down to one lane eastbound. We're hearing that from time to time, traffic is being detoured off of the 401 and onto the county road system, and with that comes a lot of heavy truck traffic, and we wanted to maintain a detour that used county roads because the heavy trucks have no place on the township roads, so that we proposed the fairly lengthy detour as the most effective and appropriate route. Looking into what it would take to stage this, there would be additional design, the design engineer would need approximately $12,000 more to collect additional information, both on the surface and below the water level, provide a slightly modified design, the approval authorities would need another look at the proposal, the new, the idea to stage it would involve placing fill within the 100-year flood elevation, which is not part of the original proposal, so we would be looking at delays between South Nation Conservation Authority, DFO, in terms of another review process, and then the contractor has provided a preliminary estimate of $350,000, this is a very preliminary estimate, further discussions have indicated it may go higher than that, but those were somewhat informal. So given the additional cost, complexity, and the risk of delaying the project, we don't recommend changing the scope of this construction, and I would like to open this one up to some comment, I suppose, before I move on, or...
Do you want to mention the date as well, because of the injury to the...
Right, so one further item is that there was an injury among one of the foremen at Cocoa, who would have been running this project, and so Cocoa has requested a delayed start date to, is it August 8th?
Yeah, week delay.
One week, one week delay to starting this project.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Counsel Byvolds?
Thank you, Warden. As council's aware, I've been on this file a bit, probably heavier than I should, but there's been some significant challenges in South Dundas, namely caused by the 401 construction, where by about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, traffic's backed up to Upper Candor Road or Candor Road 41, and they all decided that they're going somewhere else, which is 28 or 2. And we've had two collisions that have caused some massive issues. The roundabout works really well for local traffic, but on EDR, it becomes a very challenging way of trying to get in and out of Morseburg right now, but having said that, I know that the connection at County Road 2 with Dorn is significant, I've asked for the 350, the update, I'm not going to ask county council to spend 350 grand to do it. I did ask Ben and Mike to try to extend the hour... I did ask Ben and Mike to try to extend hours and I am hoping Cocoa at least looks at it the best they can. Best case scenario is they're, they're in and out as fast as they can, I know that's, sometimes when you push a, a project, it goes the other way, but we can always hope the, the detour on the county roads is significant, like it's, if it happens at night, it'll be a, I don't even want to be around when the traffic tries to go through Dixon's Corners and Williamsburg, that, those corners are never designed for the tra, any kind of truck traffic, let alone a set EDR, so I would suggest you, you work with our direct transportation, there are two other routes that may work a bit better to, to offset it, which would be the Zieran Flag Road or the Rowena all the way to Strader and to 31 and around, so. I'm sure the locals will take those roads, they're not going to look at the signage and I don't see the signage up yet, so I see signage for the County Road 18 and Hoseck, but not the others, so communication will still be the key and making sure people know about it, the big guys all know about it, the, most of the trucking industry has heard about it and trying to already think how they're getting around it locally, but it's, it's the ones that come in from afar and all of a sudden they get to a certain point and say, where am I going and they're going to find whatever route and I know we've discussed about forcing Google to go, make them go a long ways around, but some of them will figure it out anyway and I presented my challenges, I, I, I thought at least I have to make sure that everybody's aware of what can happen here and all we can do is hope for the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, gentlemen?
Okay, also just move on to the studies and design activities, so the County Road 22 design is moving along and at this point, we believe we have all consultants retained necessary to complete the design and review work to get this to a tender-ready state in 2023. Lastly, bridge rehabilitations, we issued numerous RFPs and council has, has awarded those over this meeting and the previous meeting. We did budget for a Hess Creek Bridge, it's the south of the crossing of the two on County Road 31, we, we issued it as a, as a request for quotation, try and sort of streamline the, the later RFP process by, by getting some of the answers solved out of the way, so there will be an RFP that comes later, hopefully later this year, possibly early 2023 for design there and additionally, there was a bridge that we co-own with United Counties of Leeds and Grenville, it's called the Pittson Creek Bridge and there were some discussions about getting some work done on that bridge, we carried some money for a design, we didn't actually go through with it, I believe that was last year, they carried the money this year, so there's a little bit of a disconnect, so we may look at issuing an RFP and leaving a design on that one, but that remains to be determined as we coordinate with that county.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Councilor Bygelds?
Thank you, Warden. A comment on the, on the Hess Creek South possible going box culverts, what do you base it on because it looks great now, but I know the spring runoff, that bridge is all it needs and I don't know how many box culverts you're going to need because it will flood backwards right now, so just wondering what your philosophy or how you're thinking on that is.
So the engineer is going to complete a hydraulic analysis and determine the flows and review the capacities of various sizes and combinations of sizes of culverts and determine if there is a box culvert option, a solution that will convey those flows adequately without upstream impacts, similar to what we did with Hoseck Bridge in, in the last couple of years and once they've identified whether any solutions exist, then they'll complete a cost analysis to determine if it's even economically viable, perhaps four massive box culverts would be more costly than just keeping that bridge in good order and that's the point of that study.
Councilor Bygelds?
Thank you. How is he going to determine what a flow rate is when he's not there in the spring? It's personal experience, I own the land there, I, I see that and when, when we have the four-inch rain, that, that's full, that creek, right up to the top plus, so I don't own the land that would be challenged because you put in box culverts, but it, experience sometimes can overrule what somebody, well, as I said, right now it's nothing, but, and the same with the next one, but it's, it may be, I don't know how many, it's not, it's not Hoseck Creek, Hoseck Creek doesn't move where you're on 18, this one does have flows that, you know, you must be aware of, the, the, there's a reason why the bridge is structured the way it is and this was done in, in the 70s, I'm not saying the bridge is forever, but to replace it with boxes, it's going to take a lot of boxes in the spring versus right now where you just have a simple box and you're, you're good, it's just, you don't want it, you know, don't want to impact the drainage, that, that drain drains a significant amount of area in South Dundas and the last thing we want is to have a culvert system that somebody says, well, it looked all right now, but it looked all right in the spring and looked all right, or in fall, but all of a sudden the spring comes and you get a big freshet and, and you got to take the worst scenario, you never can take the average scenario.
Absolutely, yes, the, the engineer is going to look at the drainage area and they'll look at the rainfall history for the area and determine what the appropriate conservative estimate for, for rainfall in the area is and they will calculate a flow that's expected through there, 100-year flow, five-year flow, they'll look at what the water depths are for those and then the report also has to go through the scrutiny of the South Nation Conservation Area before any box culvert could be considered.
Councilor Bygelds?
Just one added comment, then you make sure that you incorporate our drainage superintendent and our drainage engineer because that is a municipal drain, that is not just Hess Creek, that is, that is a status municipal drain there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, gentlemen, can move forward.
Yeah, just very quickly, last report for council, I just wanted to give council a brief update on the Alexandria design for County Road 34. As council may recall, we had a $60,000 design budget for that work, we had originally budgeted 120,000, we split it in two, considering that we'd push it into 2023, I'm still not used to saying 2022 yet, so we were, you know, the anticipation was that this, this design is going to carry through into next year, at, at, at a certain point next year, we will certainly be, we'll call it a shovel-ready project and that's our intent and that's how we're going to continue to move forward. We did have and worked with North Glengarry staff to create an RFP for the overall design and we appreciated the input we got from their staff, very useful and, and helped us to finalize it and I'll be honest with you, when we had, we kind of got it to that final, we'll call it quality assurance review internally, we made a decision actually to split it up a little bit more and the reason being is that we felt like the design was, we were asking, you know, it was like you have to design this, but we didn't know the answer to this over here, so in, in some ways, we were concerned that, that we'd see some price hedging as a result of, of some of the, we'll call it like preliminary things that needed to be accomplished as part of the design, so that being said, we broke it out, we said, okay, you know, the, ultimately, the detailed design, the comments we received from North Glengarry staff are going to continue to be carried forward and we will circle back with them as well. What we have done is we've created, we'll call it a Phase One type of scope of work, which includes getting some more topographic survey for County Road 10, as council may recall, we want to incorporate County Road 10 into the design because we want it to be essentially, you know, feel, we want the roads to feel like one project, we don't want a certain design standard on County Road 10, if you drive it now, it's about four and a half lanes wide and doesn't like, you know, and it's in bad shape too, so it needs to be done at the same time, let's make sure it, it mirrors and mimics the feel that we're getting out of, out of the Main Street, County Road 34. We do have to do an archaeological assessment, which was something that was identified at the end of the EA because of some proximity to a, a cemetery, there's contamination study that needs to be done, cultural heritage assessment because of some of the old buildings, so they're just like minor things that need to, we need to check some boxes for before we are ready for, you know, detailed design and the consultant understands kind of everything that they need to be aware of as they work through detailed design, so this again, just wanted to make sure it was, it was out there and, and kind of clear and what, how we're moving forward with this and, and certainly look for any feedback. I would be happy to as well, you know, maybe set up more formal meetings with North Glengarry just to be able to keep things on the go and up to date and if it's a matter of presenting at, at North Glengarry Council, one of us would be happy to do that as well, so important, very important project, probably going to be one of the most expensive projects that I'll see in my lifetime here at SDNG and we want to get it right and I guess that's, you know, we should be making sure we're keeping council up to date because we just don't want to show up one day with a detailed design, I guess, and, and this is perhaps that first step in doing a better job of keeping council informed of how we're proceeding.
Thank you. Given the scope and the, and the extensive work that's going to be done and it's within his township, I'd like to start with Councilor McDonald.
Okay, thank you. Ben, just, as you know, we always have a problem with the, what's a municipal road versus what's a county road and I'm, I kid you not, when I get, say I get 10 complaints a, a week on Main Street, I know, I complain myself because it's, it's, it's terrible, so I'm just wondering if we could work with our township staff on a communication plan, just to let them know where we're going with this, so the public understands that, you know, it's something that we're, we're working on, it's something that we're looking for a funding envelope for and when we're talking about that, I was, and I saw it in the report, but is there, are we actually going to consider doing a skin patch on that road?
Let me, yes, we're going to, can I, is it, is it, we easily answer to say, yes, we're going to consider it, we're, we're at that point as our 2022 hot mix wraps up, we're looking forward to our, you know, quantities and, and areas we're going to work next year. I, I agree with you, I, you know, I drive that road all the time and it is in rough shape, you know, I, I see it no different to how we actually managed County Road 22, dire road where, yes, we knew it was coming, but like the road had deteriorated to a point where we did a skin patch out there and oftentimes with our asphalt recycling and whatnot, we have some opportunities to not lose the value we're putting into it, so I, I think, you know, from our perspective, like maybe a double micro, micro-surfacing, just to again, kind of level that out a little bit and make it smoother or, or a skin patch is, is something we want to do just to hold that roadway because I, you know, if I'm being, I like to be optimistic, but I also think we need to be realistic here, I don't, you know, we're going to have to start saving up for this project, in a perfect world, we get funding and maybe it happens in 2024, I would love that, but I'm not sure if that's, that's going to happen, like I, I don't know how we're, we're going to message that, but if, if that's even the horizon we're looking at, we need to do something to hold it together while we wait for the money to, to be ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. No, good.
Any other comments or questions? Again, I would just add my two cents, not that anybody wants to delay it, but I would certainly hope and not saying, I'm not suggesting that we, that we do things wrongly, but as a former truck driver who used to go through Alexandria, it really behooves you to get this correct, if it takes more time, but build that road correctly, I know you have this traffic council and I know everyone's aware, but again, as somebody who drove a 53-foot trailer up and down through there for almost 10 years, this needs to be done properly and given actual routing where we can get through Alexandria and around Alexandria and not cause the problems that we would typically cause for all the residents that are there. Thank you. We'll go out to an official plan update, Mr. Young?
So county council, the previous council adopted the official plan actually five years ago yesterday through bylaw 5119, subsequently, it was approved by the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, however, as council knows, there were basically hundreds of square kilometers, this area is about over four times the size of Cornwall, that was changed by the province without consultation with the counties, so SDNG and the six municipalities and 30 other parties, which is a fairly substantial hearing, submitted appeals and we're, we are happy to report that we've now resolved all of the appeals except for one, we had the final resolution with North Dundas on the 31st of May and now we're just about to upload all the, the rest of the mapping to, to use it going forward, we have been using this new official plan and, and anyone who didn't get their application in before the decision has to follow the new policies, but we were able to, to, to get some approvals in even for properties that did not change, there's one appeal left, Cartwave Realty and that's has to do with the urban boundary, which will also be looked at through the urban growth study coming to council this fall, so that one should be able to be resolved if those lands are included in the boundary and then we have one other matter that's been referred to a combined official plan amendment, zoning, aggregate resource, probably five or six hearings all combined into one and, and we do have an update at that in the, the closed session afterwards, so as you can see, the cost for this hearing process was fairly substantial, almost $500,000, including legal fees, including the expert witnesses we need to retain, including postage, serving dozens of parties every single time we have to have a meeting, a motion, so unfortunately, it was a fairly expensive process, but as we know in the report, we were successful in negotiating major economic development, properties with economic development potential back into the, the rural district and, and areas that can be used for future housing and employment and, and areas for aggregate, so I think at the end of the day, that we felt that we did, the lands that were still left in agriculture were, were truly some fairly good farmland, so at the end of the day, we did accept that through the settlement, but we also negotiated back many of the lands that were marginal farmland or, or near our towns and villages or airports or other infrastructure, so going forward, the next step is to resolve this next appeal either through hearing or, or other discussions and work on the, the growth study and, and have those official plan amendments for, for each of the municipalities, but thankfully, we won't have to go through this process for the official plan for 10 years, although we're already in year five, just to finalize it unfortunately, but I'm happy to take any questions from council on this.
Questions, comments? Councilor Ward?
Through the chair and I, I'm not going to belabor this, I think I've made my position on this fairly clear, but I do think it's important that whenever this is finished, we compile some recommendations in regards to how we avoid doing this again. At a half a million, what really comes down to fundamental communications, I think we could have taken that money and invested it somewhere else to, to more benefit than what we're seeing out of this process and it ultimately comes down to communication because we've done it in a very direct procedural matter, but it could have also been done with a, with a sort of a sentiment of cooperation that I think probably would have avoided most of this problem, so when the time is right, my recommendation is that we compile a letter and send it to the appropriate ministries and just outline the frustration with this current process. Thank you.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I usually like to agree with the pleasant councilwork, but I think it needs to be labored, needs to be, be labored, it needs to be spoken and the, the taxpayers need to understand the absolute waste by the ministry of $500,000 or $480,000 of taxpayer money, as Mr., as Peter, Mr. Young says, it was five years ago, this was settled, five years later, $480,000 of taxpayer money and, and people talk about transparency, talk about the need to understand and better use of taxpayer dollars and it's, it's, it's not against you, Councilor Ward, you're just very pleasant about this, it, it's, it's absolutely atrocious, we talk about social housing and affordability and, and such things and we're just going down the path of the key information report presented by the Transportation Department about struggles and dollars and they think- in dollars, and they think nothing of it, to spend $480,000 of our taxpayer money. It has to be announced widely that that's where a lot of money went, and it's such a disgrace. Thank you for allowing me, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments, questions? I would just add to it, I certainly agree with everyone who's spoken, but I think, and Councilor, sorry, CEO Simpson, I'll let you speak next. I think you're all actually being kind because you're focusing on the $480,000 excluding staff time and municipalities. And since we've been working on it in North Dundas, just to personalize it, I'm not sure that we haven't paid our own planner over $500,000 throughout, not just this process, but previous work that he'd done on it, and all of, everyone else is sharing in the costs that are here. So $480,000 might be a deal that we could cut quickly. It's certainly, I assume that everyone else feels the same, but it certainly does warm my heart to see the damage you can do with a marker, a map, and little to no to local knowledge if you're sitting in Queens Park. It's absolutely insane. And the last comment would be for the egg community, because I have friends of mine who are caught in some of that prime egg property, who are third and fourth generation farmers that will just look at you and say, do you think if we could crop that field, we wouldn't? So perhaps they could step outside of at least the GTA the next time they want to take a map and a marker. Mr. CEO?
Thank you very much. I just want to thank Peter Young for stick handling this to fruition. He's done a lot of hard work on it over the last, since he's been here to actually bring it to a successful, what I think is a very successful conclusion based on where we started. And I also want to give kudos to Allison McDonald, his predecessor, who moved the yardsticks. She did a lot of work on it as well, so thanks very much, Peter. And I'm going to comment as well on the, not only the money, but, you know, the process. And to me, this is just another example of how the provincial system is completely broken when it comes to land use planning. It's a provincially controlled system, and they make the rules and they make unilateral changes without consultation. And here's the, here's the, you know, we're already five years into a supposedly a 10-year review, so I would hope that, you know, with the new government in Queens Park, and we have two new MPs, hopefully they can get working on some substantive changes to make the system better and, you know, work better for locally and for the provincial taxpayers as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Now, I'll just ask members of council if you would like, we do have closed session. Up next, does anyone require a very short bio break, or would you like to go through? All right, we'll have a five-minute bio break. Please and thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, could I please have you read the motion to go into camera?
It's moved by Counsel Laundrie, seconded by Counsel Smith, that counsel proceed in camera pursuant to Section 239, 2E of the Municipal Act 2001, litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality. Official plan appeal.
All in favor? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Moved by Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel Jaworski, that counsel adjourn to the call of the chair.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Thank you to the public, thank you to members of council, thank you to all the experts that came. Have a great day.[1767.25]